What is that we are going to discuss today? Reminders. Reminders, something which is from basics to advanced, I will discuss. Basics to advanced. Basics to advanced level, I will discuss. Basics to advanced level. What are the concepts which I am going to discuss? One is negative reminder. One is negative reminders. We will see the drawback. What is the demerit of a negative reminder? Then we will see Euler theorem application. Euler theorem application. Euler theorem is used when the denominator it is a composite number. What if the denominator it is a prime number? Then we also will see Fermat's theorem application. Fermat's theorem application. What if Euler theorem fails? Then we will also see Chinese reminder theorem. Chinese reminder theorem. Totally, I think two sessions are required to complete it. Let us see how much, how many problems we can complete. Euler theorem is used when the denominator is a composite number. Certain problems Euler theorem will not give the answer fast. Then we will use Chinese reminder theorem. Chinese reminder theorem is like a digital sum. It will eliminate. It will eliminate incorrect answer options. It will eliminate incorrect answer options. It will eliminate incorrect answer options. Chinese reminder theorem. By knowing this theorem, you can solve a lot of problems by eliminating answer options. Next one. Next important key point. Problems based on a power n plus r minus b power n. A power n plus r minus b power n. Last concept is Wilson's theorem. Wilson's theorem. Wilson's theorem. And any other advanced problems. This will be the classroom structure. Any other advanced problems. Any other advanced problems. Reminders is an extremely important topic. Very, very important topic, reminders. These are the subtopics in reminder topics. The first subtopic is problems based on negative reminder. What is a positive reminder? What is a negative reminder? When to use a positive reminder? When to use a negative reminder? What is congruence module theorem for singh into for powers, for two powers, three powers? What is the drawback of Euler's theorem? What is the drawback of negative reminder theorem? Why Euler theorem came into picture? What if the denominator it is a prime number? Denominator it is a prime number. Either Fermat's theorem is used or Wilson's theorem is used. Wilson's theorem. How to eliminate incorrect answer options by using Chinese reminder theorem? Then we will see problems based on. A power n plus r minus b power n. These are the six types which we are going to discuss. So definitely minimum four hours is required to discuss every concept in detail. Let us see the concept one by one, one by one, one by one. First one. Type one. Type one. Introduction to. Introduction to. Introduction to. Reminders. Just write down in the same sequential order. Introduction to. Reminders. Introduction to. Introduction to reminders. Now, what is a reminder? What is a dividend? What is a quotient? Let us see one by one, one by one. Introduction to reminders. Introduction to reminders. Suppose, see here sir. Thirteen is there, thirteen is a number. Thirteen is getting divided by five. Thirteen is getting divided by five. Five twos are ten, five twos are ten. Reminder, it is nothing but three. What is left over after you divide thirteen by five? Five twos are ten. Reminder, it is nothing but three. Three is nothing but the reminder. Three is nothing but the reminder. Three is nothing but the reminder. First, we will write some important key points. What is, what do you mean by dividend? What do you mean by divisor? What do you mean by quotient? Quotient. And what do you mean by reminder? These are the four important key points that you should know whenever you are solving reminder based problems. What do you mean by dividend? What do you mean by divisor? What do you mean by quotient and reminder? Dividend, what do you mean by dividend? Dividend is nothing but the number which is getting divider. Number which is getting divided. For which number you are dividing? Number which is getting divided. Divided. Here dividend is nothing but thirteen. Dividend is nothing but thirteen. What do you mean by divisor? Divisor is the number which is dividing. Number which is getting, which is dividing. Number which is dividing quotient. Sorry, number which is dividing dividend is called the divisor which is nothing but five. How many times divisor will divide? How many times, how many times divisor divides? How many times divisor divides dividend? That is nothing but quotient. That is nothing but quotient. Reminder. Reminder is nothing but derived from remaining which is nothing but leftover. How much is leftover? How much is leftover? Take a number, whatever the number that you take, that is nothing but the dividend. Divide these number by some random number. If you divide it by some random number, I will get five. How many times it is dividing? Five twos are ten. What is leftover? Leftover is nothing but the reminder. Leftover is nothing but the reminder. First key point, thirteen is nothing but five into two plus three. Thirteen is nothing but five into two plus three. Very, very important key point. Dividend equal and two. Dividend equal and two. Divisor into quotient. Divisor into quotient plus reminder. If dividend, divisor and quotient are given. Dividend is given by divisor into quotient plus reminder. Dividend is nothing but divided. Divisor into quotient plus reminder. Dividend equal and two, divisor into quotient plus reminder. Our entire problems, whatever we are going to solve, we are going to focus on this concept. In the divisibility theorem, we will attack this. This is in mathematics is represented by thirteen is divided by five. Five twos are ten. Quotient, we will not write. Reminder is nothing but three. Thirteen when divided by five. Five twos are ten. Reminder, it is nothing but three. R is nothing but the reminder. Thirteen is the dividend. Five is nothing but the divisor. Five twos are ten. What is the positive reminder? Three. Reminder is written on the right hand side. This is the definition of a dividend, divisor and quotient. This is the definition of dividend, divisor and quotient. Dividend, divisor and quotient. Dividend, divisor and quotient. Next one. Dividend, divisor and quotient. Second important key point. Negative reminder concept. Negative reminder concept. Negative reminder. Concept. Negative reminder concept. Very, very important concept. At the end of the class, you will solve close to sixty to seventy problems. First one. Reminder when thirteen is divided by seven. Thirteen is divided by seven. Thirteen divided by seven. Seven ones are seven. Seven ones are seven. Positive reminder is nothing but six. Seven ones are seven. What is left over? That is nothing but six. Negative reminder. Negative reminder is take a number which is just a multiple of seven greater than thirteen. Seven twos are fourteen. Thirteen is one less than fourteen. Thirteen is one less than fourteen. So it is minus one. One more example. As many examples as possible, we will try to solve. Second example. Twenty-three divided by five. Twenty-three divided by five. Twenty-three divided by five. Positive reminder. Five fours are twenty. What is left over? It is nothing but three. Just take a number which is just greater than twenty-three. Five fives are twenty-five. What is the negative reminder? Negative reminder, it is nothing but minus two. Twenty-three is, what do you mean by minus two? Twenty-three is just two less than twenty-five. Two less than, therefore it is minus two. Seven twos are fourteen. Seven twos are fourteen. Thirteen is just one less than fourteen. So it is nothing but minus one. It is nothing but minus one. Again, I am repeating it. Seven ones are seven. Positive reminder six. Negative reminder minus one. Five fours are twenty. Positive reminder three. Negative reminder minus two. Now, these are nothing but these. Thirteen is the number which is getting divided. So it is dividend. Seven is the number which is dividing. So it is nothing but divisor. Seven is the divisor. Seven is nothing but the divisor. Seven ones are seven. Positive reminder six, negative reminder minus one. Third problem is, third concept is very important. In case if you got a negative reminder. In case if you got a negative reminder. Add with, add with divisor. Add with divisor. Add with divisor to get positive reminder. Add with divisor to get positive reminder. Add with divisor to get positive reminder. For example, you got minus one here. You got negative reminder, but I want a positive reminder. Add with denominator. What is seven minus one? Seven minus one is nothing but six. How to convert a negative reminder to a positive reminder? If in case if you got negative reminder minus two. Add with the, add with the divisor to get the positive reminder. If you got a negative reminder, five minus two, it is nothing but three. Positive reminder, it is nothing but three. Positive reminder, it is nothing but three. Suppose in case if you got positive reminder. In case if you got positive reminder. In case if you got positive reminder. Subtract from divisor. Subtract from divisor. Subtract from divisor. Subtract from divisor to get negative reminder. Subtract from divisor to get negative reminder. To get negative reminder. For example, very, very important concept. You should know when to use positive reminder and when to use a negative reminder. Suppose you got a negative reminder. Negative reminder to positive. Add with the denominator. Seven minus one is six. If you got a negative reminder, add with the denominator to get the positive reminder. From negative reminder to positive reminder. Add with the denominator. Negative reminder to positive reminder. Add with the denominator. From positive reminder to negative reminder. Subtract it. What is six minus seven? It is minus one. What is three minus five? It is minus two. Negative reminder to positive reminder. Add with the divisor. Positive reminder to negative reminder. Subtract it from the denominator. Negative reminder to positive reminder. Add with the denominator. These extremely important concept. How to do negative reminder? What is a negative reminder? What is a positive reminder? How to convert negative reminder to positive reminder interchangeably? One more example. One more example. Twenty divided by seven. Twenty divided by seven. If I do a positive reminder. If I do a positive reminder. Seven twos are fourteen. Positive reminder is nothing but six. Seven twos are fourteen. Positive reminder is nothing but six. Negative reminder. Seven threes are twenty-one. Negative reminder, it is nothing but minus one. Negative reminder, it is nothing but minus one. Let me take another example. Forty divided by seven. Forty divided by seven. Forty divided by seven. Seven fives are thirty-five. What is the positive reminder? Positive reminder is five. What is the negative reminder? Seven six are forty-two. Seven six are forty-two. What is the negative reminder? Negative reminder is nothing but minus two. This example is of extreme importance. Seven twos are fourteen. Positive reminder is six. Negative reminder, seven threes are twenty-one which is minus one. Seven fives are thirty-five. Positive reminder is five. Negative reminder minus two. Now, what we will do? We will do some mathematical operations on this one. First example. Reminder when twenty plus forty divided by seven. Twenty plus forty divided by seven. Twenty plus forty divided by seven. This can be solved in three different methods. Three different methods. The first method, twenty plus forty, it is sixty. Divide these sixty by seven. Twenty plus forty, sixty. Sixty divided by seven. Seven eights are fifty-six. Seven eights are fifty-six. What is the answer? Four. First is I added the numerators. Twenty plus forty, it is sixty. Sixty divided by seven. Seven eights are fifty-six. Reminder four. Second method. What is the second method? Do it individually with positive reminder. Twenty divided by seven. Twenty divided by seven. Seven twos are fourteen. Positive reminder is six. Seven fives are thirty-five. Seven fives are thirty-five. What is the positive reminder? Remaining, it is five. Seven twos are fourteen. Positive reminder six. Seven fives are thirty-five. Positive reminder is five. When you divide a number by seven, you will not get a value greater than seven. In case if you got a value greater than seven. Divided by seven. Eleven divided by seven. Seven ones are seven. What is the positive reminder? Four. Again, I am repeating it. One is add both the values and divide by seven. Second thing is do it individually. Twenty divided by seven. Seven twos are fourteen. Positive reminder, it is six. Seven fives are thirty-five. Positive reminder, it is five. Eleven divided by seven. When you divide a number by seven, you will not get a value greater than seven. Again, further divide. Eleven by seven, four. Reminder. This is by using positive reminder. This is by using positive reminder. This by using positive reminder. Negative reminder. Seven threes are twenty-one. Negative reminder is minus one. Seven six are forty-two. Negative reminder is minus two. Divide by seven. Minus one, minus two. Negative reminder is minus three. Whenever you got the negative reminder, add with the denominator to get the positive reminder. Add with the denominator to get the positive reminder. That means either you can add both and you can divide by seven or you can do individually. Seven twos are fourteen, six. Seven fives are thirty-five, five. Six plus five. Eleven divided by seven, it is four. Seven threes are twenty-one, minus one. Seven six are forty-two, minus two. Minus one, minus two. It is minus three. In case if the reminder, it is minus three. Whenever you got the negative reminder value, add with the denominator to get the positive reminder value. Seven minus three, it is nothing but four. Seven minus three, it is nothing but four. So the important learning from this question is either you can do the complete value of the numerator, you will get the answer or you can use positive reminder logic or you can use negative reminder logic or you can use negative reminder logic. These method, in case if it is twenty into forty, the complications, calculations will become little difficult. Calculations will be, become little difficult. I hope it is clear. Seven twos are fourteen, six. Seven fives are thirty-five, five. Six plus five, it is eleven. Eleven divided by seven, it is nothing but four. Seven threes are twenty-one, minus one. Seven six are forty-two, minus two. Minus one, minus two, it is nothing but minus three. Positive reminder, it is four. This is example one. Example one. Example two. First, we will write down this key point. Twenty divided by seven. Twenty divided by seven. Positive reminder is seven twos are fourteen which is six. Negative reminder is seven threes are twenty-one which is minus one, which is minus one. Similarly. Reminder when forty divided by seven. Seven fives are thirty-five. Positive reminder is five. Negative reminder is seven six are forty-two. Negative reminder is minus two. We did addition. Twenty plus forty, we did it. Now let us do two more examples. One, we will multiply. Idea is to tell you mathematical operations answer will not change. Twenty into forty divided by seven. Twenty into forty divided by seven. The first method is again this problem, we will look at it from three angles. Reminder when twenty into forty divided by seven. Twenty into forty. Twenty into forty is eight hundred. Twenty into forty is eight hundred. Eight hundred divided by seven. Seven elevens are seventy-seven. Thirty. Seven fours are twenty-eight. Positive reminder, it is two. Generic division. What I did, twenty into forty is eight hundred. Eight hundred divided by seven. Seven elevens are seventy-seven, thirty. Seven fours are twenty-eight. By using positive reminder. Seven twos are fourteen. Seven twos are fourteen. It is nothing but remaining left over, it is six. Seven fives are thirty-five. Seven fives are thirty-five. Remaining, it is five. When I further divide by seven. Thirty, six fives are thirty. Whenever you are dividing a number by seven, you will not get a reminder greater than seven. Thirty divided by seven. Seven fours are twenty-eight. Positive reminder, it is two. Positive reminder, it is two. Again, next one. Seven threes are twenty-one. It is minus one. Seven six are forty-two. It is minus two. When divided by seven. Minus one into minus two. Answer is nothing but plus two. Minus one into minus two. Answer is nothing but plus two. Whenever you are doing either plus or into, similarly you can also do minus. The net result, it is not changing. Net result, whether you do positive reminder. I did positive reminder here. I did negative reminder here. And I did generic multiplication here. In all these three cases, in all these three cases, answer reminder does not change. Answer reminder does not change. So whenever you are doing reminder problems, either take the individual number and do it or probably take the entire product or whatever is there in the numerator, divide it. Still the answer will not change. Still the answer will not change. I hope it is clear. One by one, one by one, we will discuss the problems. Type one. Type one. Type one. Many types we will see. First type, first problem. Reminder when. Twenty-one into. Twenty-two into. Reminder when twenty-one into. Twenty-two into. Twenty-three divided by twenty. Reminder when twenty-one into. Twenty-two into twenty-three divided by twenty. Instead of doing all these multiplication and dividing, do it individually. Twenty ones are twenty. Remaining, it is one. Twenty ones are twenty. Remind, left over, it is nothing but the reminder. It is nothing but two. Twenty ones are twenty. Left over, it is nothing but three. One into two into three. Answer for this question is six. Twenty ones are twenty. Reminder, it is one. Twenty ones are twenty. Reminder, it is two. Twenty ones are twenty. Reminder, it is three. One into two into three, it is six. Six is less than the denominator, so that itself will be the answer. That itself will be the answer. Reminder when. Reminder when. Thirty-seven into thirty-nine. Into forty-one. Thirty-seven into thirty-nine into forty-one divided by thirty-eight. Thirty-seven into thirty-nine into forty-one divided by thirty-eight. Now see here. Whenever the questions are like this, thirty-seven into thirty-nine into forty-one. Don't multiply these three. Do it individually. Thirty-eight ones are thirty-eight. It is minus one. Thirty-eight ones are thirty-eight. It is plus one. Thirty-eight ones are thirty-eight. Reminder, it is nothing but three. So minus one into one into three, which is nothing but minus three. In case if you got a negative reminder. In case if you got a negative reminder. Add with the denominator to get the positive reminder. Add with the denominator to get the positive reminder. Answer can never be negative. In case if you got a negative value, add with the denominator to get the positive value. You got minus three. Add with denominator. Thirty-eight minus three, it is nothing but thirty-five. Again, I am repeating. Do it individually with the numbers. Thirty-eight ones are thirty-eight, minus one. Thirty-eight ones are thirty-eight, one. Thirty-eight ones are thirty-eight. Reminder, it is three. Minus one into one into three, which is nothing but minus three. Minus three. Whenever you got a negative reminder, add with the denominator to get the positive reminder. Thirty-eight. Thirty-eight minus three, answer is nothing but thirty-five. Thirty-eight minus three, answer is nothing but thirty-five. Third question. Third one. Reminder when. This is a cat replica question. Third one. Nineteen ninety-eight into nineteen ninety-nine. Into two thousand. Nineteen ninety-eight into nineteen ninety-nine into two thousand divided by seven. Divided by seven. Nineteen ninety-eight into nineteen ninety-nine into two thousand divided by seven. So instead of multiplying all this, first we will divide nineteen ninety-eight by seven. Seven twos are fourteen, fifteen-nine. Seven eights are fifty-six, thirty-eight. Seven fives are thirty-five. It is three. Again, I am repeating sir. Divide nineteen ninety-eight by seven. Seven twos are fourteen, fifteen-nine. Seven eights are fifty-six, thirty-eight. Seven fives are thirty-five. It is three. These number is just one more than this number. It is four. This one more than this number, it is five. Three into four into five divided by seven. Three into four into five divided by seven. Twelve fives are sixteen. Sixty divided by seven. Seven eights are fifty-six. Seven eights are fifty-six. Positive reminder, it is nothing but four. Positive reminder, it is nothing but four. Third is a cat exam replica question. First and two are basic problems. First and two are basic problems. Now see here. Seven twos are fourteen, fifteen-nine. Seven eights are fifty-six, thirty-eight. Seven fives are thirty-five. Reminder, it is three. Nineteen ninety-eight divided by seven. Reminder, it is three. Nineteen ninety-nine is one more than three. It is four. Two thousand, it is one more than nineteen ninety-nine. It is five. Three into four into five divided by seven. Three fours are twelve. Twelve fives are. Three into four into five divided by seven, three fours are twelve, twelve fives are sixty, sixty divided by seven, seven eights are fifty-six. What is the positive reminder? Four. What is the positive reminder? Four. This is the third question, sixty by seven. Fourth question, reminder one, fourteen twenty-one into fourteen twenty-three into fourteen twenty-five divided by twelve. Fourth question, again, it is a CAT replica question. Fourteen twenty-one into fourteen twenty-three into fourteen twenty-five divided by twelve. Now, what you will do is, you will go step by step, step by step. First, we will do this, first, we will divide fourteen twenty-one by twelve. Twelve ones are twelve, twenty-two, twelve ones are twelve, hundred and one, twelve eights are ninety-six, twelve eights are ninety-six. Leftover, it is nothing but five. Again, I am repeating, twelve ones are twelve, twenty-two, twelve ones are twelve, hundred and one, twelve eights are ninety-six, it is five. This value, it is two more than this value, so it is the seven. This is two more than this value, so two more than seven, it is nine. Divide by twelve, divide by twelve, five into seven into nine divided by twelve. Here, you can do in any way, the answer will remain the same. You can take any two and get the answer. Suppose if I take first two, thirty-five divided by twelve, thirty-five divided by twelve. Twelve threes are thirty-six, twelve threes are thirty-six, minus one, remaining it is nine. Minus one into nine, which is nothing but minus nine. Negative reminder, minus nine, add with the denominator. What is twelve minus nine? Three, twelve minus nine three. Sir, can I take the next two values? You can take the next two values. Nine sevens are sixty-three, sixty-three divided by twelve, sixty-three divided by twelve. Twelve fives are sixty, reminder three, divided by twelve. Fifteen divided by twelve, twelve ones are twelve, what is the positive reminder? What is the positive reminder? Answer is nothing but three. Twelve ones are twelve, very, very good question, and it is a CAT exam replica question, CAT exam model question, CAT exam model question. Twelve ones are twelve, twenty-two, twelve ones are twelve, hundred and one, twelve eights are ninety-six, it is five. This is nothing but two more than this value, it is seven. Two more than this value, it is nine. Either you can take the first two and divide, or last two can divide. Thirty-five divided by twelve, twelve threes are thirty-six. Negative reminder, minus one into nine by twelve, negative reminder, minus one, positive reminder will be three. You can take the next two, seven nines are sixty-three, sixty-three divided by twelve, twelve fives are sixty, reminder three. Five threes are fifteen, fifteen divided by twelve, fifteen divided by twelve. Answer is twelve ones are twelve, positive reminder is nothing but three, positive reminder, it is nothing but three. Fourth problem, I hope the idea is clear. In case if you are a student who is preparing for CAT examination, the entire CAT paper will be an online paper, and the paper will be in English. The paper will not be in bilingual, English and Hindi, it will only be in English. Tomorrow, probably, once you do an MBA from I A M Ahmedabad, you will have a people. My younger brother is from I A M Bangalore. His team member consists of people from multiple countries, somebody from France, somebody from Germany, somebody from Italy, somebody from Slovakia, somebody from India. So, the language which helps him to discuss the management strategies is basic English. Please do not push me to speak in Hindi, I will do what is required for the CAT examination. I will not go here and there. Those of you don't know, CAT exam is considered to be the toughest exam in India, and the paper will be in English. Next one, I hope this question is clear. Fourth question, fifth one, fifth one, please write down, fifth one. Let me take few more questions. Reminder one, three ninety-one, three ninety-three, three ninety-four divided by thirteen, divided by thirteen. Sixth question, reminder one, one, two, three, four, one, two, three, four, two, two, four, two into five sixty-seven divided by eleven, divided by eleven. Seventh question, reminder one, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, zero, nine, zero divided by nine. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, zero divided by nine. These are the three questions, reminder one, three ninety-one into three ninety-three into three ninety-four divided by thirteen. One, two, three, four, two into five sixty-seven divided by eleven. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, zero divided by nine. Now listen carefully, this question, thirteen thirties are three ninety, remaining it is one. Thirteen thirties are three ninety, remaining it is three. Thirteen thirties are three ninety, remaining it is four. One into three into four, answer for this question is twelve. Answer for the first question, fifth one, it is nothing but twelve. Answer for the fifth question, it is nothing but twelve. Sixth question, if you see one, two, three, four, two, some of the odd places, one plus three plus two, one plus three plus two, it is nothing but six. Some of the even places, what is some of the even places? Two plus four, six, that means, one, two, three, four, two, one, two, three, four, two. Some of the odd places, some of the odd places, some of the odd places is equal and to some of the even places. Some of the odd places is equal and to some of the even places. That means, this number is divisible by eleven, that means, this number is divisible by eleven. If it is perfectly divisible, answer is twenty-two divided by eleven, twenty-two is divisible by eleven, so the reminder is zero. Forty-four is divisible by eleven, reminder is zero. One, two, three, four, two is a divisible by eleven, or in mathematical language, eleven is the factor of one, two, three, four, two. Reminder, it is zero, reminder, it is zero. Seventh question, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, zero divided by nine. Divisibility rule of nine is, some of the digits, divisibility rule of nine is, some of the digits should be divisible by nine, some of the digits should be divisible by nine, some of the digits should be divisible by nine. Some of the digits should be divisible by nine. These are divisible by nine, eight plus one divisible by nine, seven plus two divisible by nine, six plus three divisible by nine, four plus five divisible by nine. Reminder, it is nothing but zero, reminder, it is nothing but zero. Type one, we did close to seven problems. To explain a concept, how the reminders can be used individually, if there are three to four terms which are getting multiplied, take the first term, get the reminder, take the second term, get the reminder, take the third term, get the reminder. Multiply all the reminders, if the answer is greater than the denominator, further divide it, otherwise, write down as it is. Otherwise, write down as it is. Five, six, seven, seven problems which are foundation problems, type number two. Type two, type two. Type one, we did a multiplication, type two. First question, reminder one, two power thirty-six divided by three. Reminder one, two power thirty-six divided by three, two power thirty-six divided by three. Second question, seven power one ninety-seven, seven power one ninety-seven divided by eight. Third question, reminder one, thirty-two power thirty-three divided by eleven, thirty-two power thirty-three divided by eleven. Fourth question, ten power two seventy-one divided by nine, ten power two seventy-one divided by nine. Ten power two seventy-one divided by eleven. In the type one problems, we did into, 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 now we will do, now we will do, power, power, power. First problem, it is easy, right after the class, the notes can be available on the Telegram group. Reminder one, two power thirty-six divided by three. Two power thirty-six is nothing but two into, two into, two, and so on up to, thirty-six times, and so on up to, thirty-six times divided by three. Two into, two into, two, and so on up to thirty-six times. If you see, three ones are three, it is nothing but minus one. Three ones are three, it is nothing but minus one. Minus one, minus one, minus one, it is the negative reminder thirty-six times, it is the negative reminder thirty-six times. You don't need to write like this and waste your time, this is a waste of time. Writing two power four as two into two into two, writing two power four as two into two into two. Now see here, two power thirty-six divided by three. We are solving problems which are of the form, we are solving problems which are of the form, numerator power X divided by denominator, numerator power X divided by denominator, numerator power X divided by denominator. Just divide the numerator by denominator. Three ones are three, it is minus one, attach the same power as it is. Minus one power even number, answer is nothing but one, answer is nothing but one. Again, I am repeating, three ones are three, negative reminder is minus one. Minus one power thirty-six, answer is nothing but one. Eight ones are eight, negative reminder is minus one, attach the same power. Minus one power odd number, it is minus one, minus one power odd number, it is minus one. If you get a negative reminder, add with the denominator, add with the denominator. Denominator, it is eight, eight minus one, it is nothing but seven, eight minus one, it is nothing but seven. Eleven threes are thirty-three, eleven threes are thirty-three, again, it is nothing but minus one. Keep the same power as it is, minus one power odd, minus one power odd, it is nothing but minus one. Negative reminder, we got, if you got the negative reminder, add with the denominator, add with the denominator. Eleven minus one, it is nothing but ten, eleven minus one, it is nothing but, it is nothing but ten. Next one, nine ones are nine, positive reminder, it is one. One power any natural number, one power any natural number, answer is nothing but one, answer is nothing but one. It's a very simple type two foundation problem, where directly numerator when you are dividing by denominator, either you are getting plus one or minus one. We will write the type like this, so that it will be clear to you. Directly, you are getting either plus one or minus one, when you are dividing numerator by denominator. There is no calculation required, directly, three ones are three, minus one power thirty-six. Eight ones are eight, minus one power one ninety-seven, eleven threes are thirty-three, minus one power odd. Nine ones are nine, one power two seventy-one. Four problems are the basic problems, four problems are the basic problems. First is an into, from into only power is derived, then type two, four problems are the basic problems. Now fifth problem, type two, type two. We just now discussed model one, this is model number two, this is model number two. Here, what we will, we will write it as model number one, so that each and every model will be extremely clear to you. This is type two, model number one, model number one, this is nothing but model number two. We will write the questions, questions. First question, reminder one, two power hundred divided by five. Reminder one, two power hundred divided by five. Second question, reminder one, reminder one, five power thirty-six divided by twenty-four. Five power thirty-six divided by twenty-four. Third question, reminder one, seven power fifty-two, seven power fifty-two divided by two four zero two, two four zero two. Fourth question, reminder one, thirteen power hundred, thirteen power hundred divided by one seventy. Thirteen power hundred divided by one seventy. Model number two, model number two. Two power hundred divided by five, what is the reminder? Five power thirty-six divided by twenty-four, what is the reminder? Seven power fifty-two divided by two four zero two, what is the reminder? Thirteen power hundred divided by one seventy, what is the reminder? What is the reminder? Now see here, we are again solving the problems, numerator power X divided by denominator. In this case, where we are doing, numerator is less than denominator. Next case is, numerator is greater than denominator. Next case is, numerator is greater than denominator. Two power hundred divided by five, five power thirty-six divided by twenty-four, seven power fifty-two divided by two four zero two. Thirteen power hundred divided by one seventy. Now see the logic, now see the logic. The first thing what you should do, divide two by five, are you getting a reminder plus one or minus one? No, two when divided by five, five zeros are zero, reminder, it is two. I want plus one or minus one, I want plus one or minus one. So, check which power of two, when divided by five, I will get plus one or minus one. Two square, two square is four, four when divided by five, five ones are five. What is the negative reminder? Plus one or minus one. So, these entire question can be changed to, two square power fifty, two square power fifty divided by five. Two square power fifty divided by five, two square power fifty divided by five. Now if you see, four divided by five, it became model number one. Five ones are five, negative reminder, minus one, minus one power fifty, minus one power even. Answer is nothing but plus one, answer is nothing but plus one. Convert model number two into model number one. Two power hundred divided by five, make two square power fifty, four by five, four by five, five ones are five. Negative reminder is minus one, power remains as it is. Minus one power fifty, answer is nothing but plus one. Similarly here, five power thirty-six, five divided by twenty-four, reminder is five. Five square, five square is twenty-five, twenty-four ones are twenty-four, reminder, it is nothing but one. So, this is nothing but reminder, five square power eighteen, five square power eighteen divided by twenty-four. Twenty-five divided by twenty-four, answer is nothing but one. Twenty-five divided by twenty-four, twenty-four ones are twenty-four, positive reminder, it is nothing but one. Positive reminder, it is nothing but one. Third question, only thing which you require is finding out which power of numerator, finding out which power of numerator. When you divide by denominator, I will get plus one or minus one. Seven divided by two four zero two. Seven divided by two four zero two, seven, seven square is fourteen-nine. I want plus one or minus one, seven cubed is three forty-three. Seven power four is two four zero one, so this is nothing but. This is nothing but, seven power four, power thirteen divided by two four zero two. Seven power four, power thirteen divided by two four zero two. Seven power four is, seven square into seven square, seven square into seven square. Which is forty-nine into forty-nine, forty-nine square is two four zero one. Forty-nine square is two four zero one, seven power four, it is two four zero one. Two four zero one divided by two four zero two, two four zero two ones are two four zero two. Minus one, minus one power odd number, minus one power odd number is minus one. Positive reminder will be two four zero two minus one, which is two four zero one, which is two four zero one. Only thing which you need to be good is in finding which power of seven when you divide by two four zero two. I will get plus one or minus one. Seven power, seven cubed is three forty-three, seven power four, seven power four is, seven square into seven square. Forty-nine into forty-nine, which is two four zero one. Two four zero one divided by two four zero two, two four zero two ones are two four zero two. Negative reminder minus one, positive reminder will be two four zero one. Thirteen power hundred divided by one seventy, thirteen, which power of thirteen will give you? Plus one or minus one when you divide by one seventy, thirteen square is one sixteen nine. Thirteen square power hundred divided by one seventy, divided by one seventy. One sixteen nine divided by one seventy, one seventy ones are one seventy. Negative reminder minus one, minus one power even, minus one power even. Answer for this question is plus one, answer for this question is plus one. Not a single doubt in a reminders you will get it. In case if you are a serious and sincere student who want to learn everything related to reminders. Then probably this class will cover almost all concepts. Two power hundred divided by five, two square power fifty, five square by twenty-four. Seven power four divided by two four zero two. Thirteen power hundred divided by one seventy, thirteen square is one sixteen nine. One sixteen nine divided by one seventy, negative reminder is minus one. Minus one power even, answer is nothing but plus one, answer is nothing but plus one. I hope all these four problems are clear, let me do some more problems, some more problems. Question. Seven power three twenty divided by three forty-four, three forty-four. Seven power three twenty divided by three forty-four. Next one. Five power ninety-six divided by one twenty-four. Five power ninety-six divided by one twenty-four. Next one, five power thirty-seven divided by sixty-three. Five power thirty-seven divided by sixty-three. Next one. Nine power eighty-one divided by eighty-two. Nine power eighty-one divided by eighty-two. Seven power three twenty, seven cubed is three forty-three, seven cubed is three forty-three. Three hundred and six are three eighteen into seven square divided by three forty-four, divided by three forty-four. Three forty-three divided by three forty-four, Sangram for you. Negative reminder minus one, minus one power even plus one into seven square is fourteen-nine. Answer for the first question is fourteen-nine. Which power of seven will give you, which power of seven will give you? Plus one or minus one, seven cubed is three forty-three, three forty-three divided by three forty-four. Minus one power even plus one, so answer is fourteen-nine. Which power of five? Which power of five, when divided by one twenty-four, I will get plus one or minus one. Five cube power thirty-two divided by one twenty-four, one twenty-five divided by one twenty-four. Answer for this question is one, answer for this question is one. Seventh question also will help you Sangram, five power thirty-seven. Which power of five, when divided by plus sixty-three will give you plus one or minus one? Five square is twenty-five, five cubed is one twenty-five. Five cube power twelve, five cube power twelve into five power one divided by sixty-three, divided by sixty-three. One twenty-five divided by sixty-three, sixty-three twos are one twenty-six. Negative reminder minus one, minus one power twelve into five, minus one power even is plus five, answer is five. Nine power eighty-one divided by eighty-two, which power of nine, I will get plus one or minus one. Nine square power forty into nine power one divided by eighty-two, divided by eighty-two. Eighty-one by eighty-two, eighty-two ones are eighty-two, minus one power even, it is plus one. So one into nine, answer for this question is nine. Answer for this question is nine. I hope the idea it is clear, whenever you are getting plus one or minus one, be careful with the powers. Minus one power odd number, it is minus one, minus one power even number, it is plus one. Seven cube, seven cube why I took? Because seven cube is closer to three forty-four, five cube is closer to one twenty-four. Five cube, one twenty-five is closer to the multiple of sixty-three. Five cube is one twenty-five, five cube is one twenty-five. Nine square is closer to eighty-two, nine square it is closer to eighty-two. I hope eight problems are clear, another five problems we will discuss. We will not waste any single time in our class. Ninth one, reminder one, two power two thousand four. Reminder one, two power two thousand four divided by seven. Tenth question, tenth question, reminder one, three power five hundred divided by two forty-four. Divided by two forty-four. Eleventh one, four power one thirty-seven divided by six. Four power one thirty-seven divided by six. Four power one thirty-seven divided by six. Please put a star mark on the eleventh question, put a star mark on these eleventh question. Now see here, listen carefully. Four power one thirty-seven divided by six, first problem, first two already we did it. Which power of two is closer to seven or its multiples? Two cubed is eight, so three six are eighteen, twenty, three six are eighteen, three eights are twenty-four. Divided by seven, divided by seven. Two cube power six sixty-eight divided by seven, eight by seven, what is the reminder? One, one power any number, answer is one, one power any number, answer is one. Tenth question, reminder one, three power five hundred divided by two forty-four. Which power of three, when you divide by two forty-four, you will get plus one or minus one. Three square divided by two forty-four, no, three cube divided by two forty-four, no. Three power four, eighty-one by two forty-four, no. So this is nothing but, three power five, power hundred divided by two forty-four, divided by two forty-four. Three power five is two forty-three, two forty-three divided by two forty-four. Two forty-four ones are two forty-four, minus one, minus one power hundred, minus one power hundred. Answer is nothing but plus one, answer is nothing but plus one. Answer is nothing but plus one. I hope the idea it is clear, first one, which power of two when you divide by seven, you will get plus one or minus one. Two cube power six sixty-eight divided by seven, eight by seven it is plus one. Three power, which power of three, when you divide by two forty-four, I will get plus one or minus one. Two forty-three divided by two forty-four, minus one power hundred, it is one. Now, this one, see here, reminder one, four power one divided by six, which is nothing but four. Reminder one, four square divided by six, sixteen by six, six twos are twelve, reminder it is four. Reminder one, four cube divided by six, four cube divided by six. Four cube is sixty-four, six tens are sixty, what is the reminder? Four, very, very important key point, four power, any natural number, four power, any natural number. Four power, any natural number when you divide by six, answer is nothing but four. Why it is four? When I am discussing a Chinese reminder theorem, I will help you to understand. Four power, any natural number, four power, any natural number. If you observe, two and seven are co-prime, two numbers are said to be co-prime, if they are HCF, it is one. Three and two forty-four, three and two forty-four. Their HCF it is also one. Here, four and six, four and six HCF it is not one, both are even numbers, it is two. How to solve the problems where the numerator and denominator are not co-prime to each other, that also we will see. That also we will see. Ninth, tenth, eleventh, very, very important key point. Four power, any natural number, four power, any natural number divided by six. Four power, any natural number divided by six, answer reminder will always be four. Put a star mark, when I am discussing Chinese reminder theorem, I will give a proof to you. Why it is, why it is always four? Four power, any natural number divided by six, it is nothing but four. I hope it is clear, reminders, we are at a type number two and model number two. We are at type number two and model number two. All these concepts, I hope it is clear. Now, type number three. Type number three, one by one you should know all these types. Just solving five to ten problems does not mean that you will be extremely good. In CAT is the most difficult examination in Asia, not in India sir. CAT is considered to be the toughest examination in Asia. Type number three, type number three, what is type number three? We are solving the problems which are of the form numerator power X divided by denominator. We did a case where numerator is less than denominator. Now we are doing a case where numerator is greater than denominator. Numerator per, numerator power X divided by denominator. We did a case where numerator is less than denominator. Now we will do a case where numerator is greater than denominator. All the problems will all, will be of this form. Numerator power X divided by denominator where numerator is greater than denominator. Again ten problems we will solve, first problem. Reminder one, reminder one, seven power one forty. Reminder one, seven power one forty divided by five. Reminder one, seven power one forty divided by five. Listen carefully sir, seven power one forty divided by five. Numerator, what is the base value, seven, is it greater than denominator? Yes, make it small, five ones are five, what it is remaining? Remaining it is nothing but, two power one forty divided by five, two power one forty divided by five. Again I am repeating, five ones are five, what is left over? Two, two power one forty divided by five, which power of two? When divided by five, I will get plus one or minus one. Two square power seventy divided by five, two square power seventy divided by five. Two square is four, two square is four. Four when divided by five, five ones are five, negative reminder is minus one, minus one power even, minus one power even. Minus one power even, answer is nothing but one. Again I am repeating, five ones are five, what is left over? Two it is left over, two power one forty divided by five. Which power of two, when you divide by five, I will get plus one or minus one. Two square power seventy divided by five, four divided by five, five ones are five. Negative reminder is minus one, minus one power even, it is nothing but one. Minus one power even, it is nothing but one. Second question, second one, reminder one, thirty-two power thirty-two. Thirty-two power thirty-two divided by seven, thirty-two power thirty-two divided by seven. Again this question is of the form, numerator power X, when you divide by denominator. Numerator is greater than denominator, if numerator is greater than denominator, divide it. Seven fours are twenty-eight, what is left over? Left over is nothing but four, four power thirty-two divided by seven, four power thirty-two divided by seven. Now the previous case, which power of four, when you divide by seven, I will get plus one or minus one. It is four cube power ten into four square divided by seven. Why we are doing four cube? Because four cube is sixty-four, sixty-four divided by seven, seven nines are sixty-three, reminder it is one. Sixteen divided by seven, seven twos are fourteen, reminder it is nothing but two. Reminder it is nothing but two. Four power thirty-two divided by seven. Which power of four, when you divide by seven, the positive reminder or negative reminder will be either one or minus one. One or minus one, four cubed is sixty-four, seven nines are sixty-three, reminder it is one. Sixteen divided by seven, seven twos are fourteen, positive reminder it is two, positive reminder it is two. Third problem, third one, reminder one, reminder one, eleven power eleven divided by nine. Eleven power eleven divided by nine, eleven power eleven. Numerator it is greater than the denominator, nine ones are nine, nine ones are nine. What is left over? Left over it is two, two power eleven divided by nine. Two power eleven divided by nine, which power of two? When I divide by nine, I will get plus one or minus one. It is two cube, eight by nine, nine ones are nine, plus one or minus one. Into two square divided by nine, into two square divided by nine. Eight by nine minus one, minus one into four minus four, positive reminder will be five, positive reminder will be five. Each and every question kindly make a note in your notebook and a pen. The best way for a student to learn is create your own notes and start creating questions after this entire topic it is over. Eleven power eleven divided by nine, nine ones are nine, two power eleven divided by nine. Two cube power three into two square, two cube it is eight, eight by nine, nine ones are nine. Negative reminder is minus one, minus one into four is minus four. Positive reminder it is nothing but five, positive reminder. Positive reminder, it is nothing but five. Three problems we did on this model, numerator greater than denominator. Another four problems also we will solve. Reminder seventeen power three sixty, seventeen power three sixty divided by seven. Seventeen power three sixty divided by seven. Fifth one, reminder one, thirty-two power thirty-two divided by nine, divided by nine. Sixth problem, sixth one. Fifty-two power thousand divided by five. Fifty-two power thousand divided by five. Seventh problem, seventh problem, seventh problem. Thirteen power four naught two divided by eleven. Thirteen power four naught two divided by eleven. Thirteen power four naught two divided by eleven. There is a reason why I kept a gap after fifth problem. Because I want to discuss positive reminder as well as negative reminder. Seventeen power three sixty divided by seven. Thirty-two power thirty-two divided by nine. Fifty-two power thousand divided by five. Thirteen power four naught two divided by eleven. Eleven ones are eleven, reminder it is two. So, it is two power four naught two divided by eleven. Two power four naught two divided by eleven. Which power of two, which power of two, when divided by eleven, I will get plus one or minus one. Two square, it is four. Two cube, it is eight. Two power five, it is thirty-two. Thirty-two by eleven, it is plus one or minus one. Two power five power eighty into two square divided by eleven, divided by eleven. Two power five, two power five is thirty-two. Eleven threes are thirty-three. Negative reminder minus one, minus one power even, it is plus one. Into four, four divided by eleven, it is four. Thirteen power four naught two divided by eleven. Eleven ones are eleven. Positive reminder, it is two. Two power four naught two divided by eleven. Which power of, which power of two, when you divide by eleven, I will get plus one or minus one. Two power five is thirty-two. Thirty-two divided by eleven. Eleven threes are thirty-three. Minus one, minus one power even is plus one. Plus one into four, answer for this question is nothing but four. Answer for this question is nothing but four. So, seventh question, we did the answer as four. Now, let us do the other questions. First question, seventeen power three sixty divided by seven. Seven twos are fourteen, seven twos are fourteen. Reminder, it is nothing but three. Three power three sixty, three power three sixty divided by seven. Three power three sixty divided by seven. Which power of three, when I divide by seven, I will get plus one or minus one. So, it is three cube power one twenty divided by seven. Three cube power one twenty divided by seven. Seven fours are twenty-eight, minus one. Minus one power one twenty, minus one power one twenty. Answer is nothing but plus one. Answer is nothing but plus one. Again, I am repeating, seven twos are fourteen. Positive reminder, it is three. Three power three sixty divided by seven. Three power three, three power three is twenty-seven. Twenty-seven divided by seven. Seven fours are twenty-eight, minus one. Minus one power even, minus one power even, it is nothing but plus one. Minus one power even, it is nothing but plus one. Next one, here you can solve this problem in two methods. I will do by using positive reminder and I will also do. Okay, I will take a new fresh slide for fifth one. Sixth one, let us solve. Fifty-two by five, five tens are fifty. Remaining it is two. Two power thousand divided by five, two power thousand divided by five. What will be the answer? This is nothing but two square power five hundred divided by five. Two square power five hundred divided by five. Four by five, five ones are five. Negative reminder minus one, minus one power even, minus one power even. Four divided by five, five ones are five. Positive reminder, it is four. Negative reminder, it is minus one. Minus one power five hundred, it is one. Please put a star mark on this question sir, star mark on this question. I will tell you positive reminder and I will also tell you negative reminder. Fourth, sixth and seventh, I hope the idea it is clear. All are easy questions if you understand it. Now, let us see the fifth question. Fifth question, fifth one. Reminder one, thirty-two power thirty-two, thirty-two power thirty-two divided by seven. Thirty-two power thirty-two divided by seven. Thirty-two power thirty-two divided by seven. Method one, method one, method one. You can solve this problem in two methods. One is positive reminder, take the positive reminder up, positive reminder. Then, we will use negative reminder. In both the cases, you will get the answer. Positive reminder, if I take, seven fours are twenty-eight. Reminder is nothing but four. Reminder is nothing but four. Four power thirty-two divided by seven. Seven fours are twenty-eight. Positive reminder, it is nothing but four. Seven fours are twenty-eight, positive reminder is nothing but four. So, which power of four, when divide by seven, I will get plus one or minus one. Four cube is sixty-four, sixty-four divided by seven. Seven nines are sixty-three. Reminder one, into four square divided by seven. Into four square divided by seven. Four cube power ten divided by seven. Four cube, it is sixty-four. Sixty-four divided by seven, it is one. Sixteen divided by seven, seven twos are fourteen, seven twos are fourteen. Positive reminder, it is two. Numerator base is greater than denominator, first I divided. Seven fours are twenty-eight, reminder it is four. Four power thirty-two divided by seven. Which power of four, when you divide by seven, either I will get the positive reminder or the negative reminder. Four cube, it is sixty-four. So, three tens are thirty, remaining it is two. Sixty-four divided by seven, seven nines are sixty-three. Answer is one. Sixteen divided by two, seven twos are fourteen. Positive reminder, it is two. Second type, can I solve this problem in negative reminder? Let us see if I can do it by using negative reminder. Method number two, method number two, negative reminder, negative reminder, negative reminder. If I use a negative reminder, let us see what will happen. So, if I take a negative reminder, let me use a different color. Seven fives are thirty-five. Positive reminder is a multiple of seven just less than thirty-two. Negative reminder is a multiple of seven which is just greater than seventy, thirty-two. Seven fives are thirty-five, which is minus three. Minus three power thirty-two, minus three power thirty-two divided by seven. So, this is nothing but minus power even is plus. So, which is nothing but three power thirty-two divided by seven. Three power thirty-two divided by seven. Which power of three, when I divide by seven, I will get plus one or minus one. Three cube power ten into three square divided by seven. Three cube power ten into three square divided by seven. Twenty-seven divided by seven. Seven fours are twenty-eight. Negative reminder is minus one, minus one power even is plus one. Nine when divided by seven, positive reminder, it is two. In both the cases, either if you use positive reminder, either if you use positive reminder or negative reminder. And the answer remains the same. Let me see the comments, right? Anoj Kumar, can you please mention the question again? Please mention question number five again. Let me see if there is any calculation mistake which I did it. Minus three power thirty-two, three power thirty-two divided by seven. Three cube power ten into three square. Nine when divided by seven is two. Either you can use positive reminder to get the answer or you can do negative reminder to get the answer. Let me do one more question so that it will be clear to you. Sir, which method to choose? It depends upon your comfort zone. Sixth one, sixth one. Reminder one, reminder one, reminder one. Thirty-seven, thirty-seven. Power one twenty, power one twenty divided by seven. Thirty-seven power one twenty divided by seven. Let us see what is the answer. Thirty-seven power one twenty divided by thirty-seven. Some students use positive reminder, some students use negative reminder. You will get the same answer for both. One more example to explain this point. First one, positive reminder, positive reminder. If I use positive reminder, positive reminder. Seven fives are thirty-five. Reminder, it is two. Two power one twenty divided by seven. Two power one twenty divided by seven. Which power of two, when you divide by seven, I will get plus one or minus one. Two cube power forty divided by seven. Two cube power forty divided by seven. Two cube, it is eight, eight divided by seven. Answer is nothing but one. Seven fives are thirty-five. Positive reminder, it is two. Suppose if I take negative reminder, if I take negative reminder, negative reminder. Seven six are forty-two. Forty-two, it is minus five. Minus five power one twenty, minus five power one twenty divided by seven. Minus power even is plus. So, answer is five power one twenty divided by seven. Five power one twenty divided by seven. Which power of five, when divided by seven, I will get plus one or minus one. Five cube power forty divided by seven. Five cube, it is nothing but one twenty-five. Five cube, it is nothing but one twenty-five. Seven, eighteens are one twenty-six, which is negative reminder is minus one. Minus one power forty, answer is nothing but plus one. Answer is nothing but plus one. Idea is to tell you that you can use either positive reminder or you can use a negative reminder. Still, the answer will be same. It, which method to use depends upon your comfort zone. Idea is to get the answer very fast. This one is using positive reminder and this one is using negative reminder, using negative reminder. What are all the things that we discussed in today's class? In today's class, we discussed the definition of dividend, dividend, the number which is getting divided. Divisor, the number which is devising, dividing the given number. How many times it is getting divided, that is quotient. What is left over? We discussed what is the reminder, what is the reminder. Then, we discussed the definition of a negative reminder. Take a number which is a multiple of denominator just greater than the numerator. Then, we also discussed the relationship between a positive reminder and a negative reminder. Positive reminder and a negative reminder. Then, we had solved problems based on multiplication, based on multiplication. Multiplication based reminder problems, we solved it. Then, we solved problems where numerator divided by denominator. Directly you are getting plus one or minus one, plus one or minus one. Then, we discussed the case where not the numerator when divided by denominator. Numerator power X divided by denominator, it is giving you plus one or minus one, plus one or minus one. In the two cases we discussed, numerator less than denominator we discussed and numerator greater than denominator we discussed. All these problems, we did it in the class.